Hey, Paul. ¿Cómo estás? Bienvenido.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would want to welcome you all and then call this meeting to order at 4:34. And I want to call the regular meeting agenda item number two, and I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to address the regular agenda item number two.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone, for being here. I would ask everyone to please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for everyone here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you on tonight's agenda to multiply our efforts and let it be your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Now I'll call the regular meeting agenda item number three. Mr. Perez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And with us this afternoon, we do have some special guests here with our Sheraland ISD. They are our baseball team that represented the city of Mission. I will have Ms. Ida do the recognition as they walk in.
Ms. Lema, if you could please introduce the school board from Sheraland for the purpose of that first and then...
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to invite our school board members to please join me up here. We've got Mr. Julio Cervada and Mr. Pepe Garcia also here with us. Anyone else from the school board?
How about the superintendent of school this year?
She wasn't...we haven't worked her right now at the...
So, Mayor, Council, and the general public, I'd like to read a few comments that were prepared today. It was a historic season for both of our Sheraland baseball teams. We are honored to have them here with us today. The Diamondbacks and the Rattlers both won their matchups in the Sweet Sixteen round and both punched a ticket to the Elite Eight in the UIL State Baseball Playoffs. That is unheard of. Never before have two Valley baseball teams faced off this deep into the playoffs. What an honor. Two teams from the same city, the same district, neighbor meeting neighbor for a spot in the state tournament. It was a magical thing for the Valley to see. Students, you made the city of Mission proud as we witnessed history. More than 5,000 fans from around the Willbourn Valley jammed into the UTRGV Baseball Stadium for the 5A Region Championship Series between the Sheraland Rattlers and the Pioneer Diamondbacks. These teams, these outstanding athletes, found themselves playing in front of the largest audience either team had ever seen for the Class 5A Regional Final. The epic showdown led to the Diamondbacks earning a trip to the state tournament. It was the first time a Valley baseball team has qualified for the Final Four since Harlingen South in 2007. Overall, what an amazing accomplishment for these talented players, their devoted coaches, and their programs. Pioneer Sheraland High School, Sherry City. They share success, and today we are proud to recognize their remarkable accomplishments, and we look forward to what lies ahead next year. To the general public here, we want to say congratulations to all these amazing athletes here today. Please give them a big round of applause. And Mayor and Council, we do have a small token for them if you will join me up here in passing out these medals that were prepared for them.
You go.
I hate you first. Just try me over there.
I get like five of those.
You're not chatting.
No.
Instead, yes, you are.
Here in this, you're gonna start chatting, dude.
There you are. Dude, instead of the first one. And then...
I want to see that.
Dude, ew, that's funny.
Do another interview, bro.
Senior, ready?
Senior? Or junior?
Season, junior season or right now?
Hernandez, senior.
Congratulations.
Ivan Aldua, sophomore.
Congratulations.
Angel Nunez, senior.
Congratulations.
Pepe Servantes, junior.
Congratulations.
Isaiah Gomez, senior.
Congratulations.
There you go, there you go.
Senior, senior.
Troy Gonzalez, senior.
Juan Rivera, sophomore.
Ryan Gaisel, sophomore.
Oscar Scherner, sophomore.
Caleb Fontes, sophomore.
Congratulations.
Doyce Sanyo, senior.
Congratulations.
Matthew Rayner, graduate.
Freshman, I see freshman.
Pedro Torillas, graduate.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jonathan Legal, graduate.
Rafael Garza, freshman.
Fernando Morales, sophomore.
Congratulations.
Alex Morales, senior.
Congratulations.
Sambalu Garcia, senior.
Oh, you got a double one.
Double whammy, sorry.
Here.
Congratulations.
Pamela Grange, sophomore.
Congratulations.
David Lopez, junior.
Is that the team? Coaches?
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you.
You want to state your name for the record?
Sean Moos.
Congratulations.
Casey Smith.
Really young man.
Head coach, you want to say a few words?
I just don't really need a mic. I'm a coach. So, just like I told everybody else, anybody I've come in contact with, how proud we are of these guys, what they've done is absolutely amazing, and the way they've done it, it's a real, real simple recipe, and that's through hard work, that's through perseverance, that's through doing things the right way, and that's what you're supposed to do in life, that's what you're supposed to do in athletics, and these guys have done that, and they should be commended. So, thank you, guys. Thank you. Yes, sir, appreciate it. Thank you.
Picture, picture, let's get a picture with the council.
All right.
Go ahead, guys.
Is that all? Avio Jacob and everybody else that are here?
Yes.
I'm going to ask if I can get a break with me.
Is that all? Avio Jacob and everybody else that are here?
Yes.
I'm going to pay for them because they're not here.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, I would like to appreciate and thank you from the bottom of our heart for bringing this up to us. The recognition from the city of Mission is great. We love it because we're not only the best school district in the Valley, but we're the best school district in the state. Our numbers show it, and it's not only academics that we're good at, we're also good at other sports. And I do want to thank also, we just had a presentation made for Mr. June Lee, which is the, "We got first place in UIL in golf." Wow. It is awesome. It's great to be recognized and appreciate your time and appreciate your effort, and thanks the public for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Tavares. Regular meeting board agenda item number four, Mr. Arribalo, when you come before us, and I don't know if you want to bring your board president with you, you know, so, and your board, is any of the board?
We only have our vice president here, so...
Isn't that the president back there? Isn't that Albert?
No. No, it sure looks like him.
Albert's not here.
No, so we're here today to present the 2019 scholarship recipients from several high schools. This year, we were able to honor 20 graduates from around the Mission City, and of course, we have six different high schools. So, I'm going to go ahead and just share a little bit on it, but April is on the committee, and she's our vice president, so I would like for her to share a little bit of what it takes to be able to receive a scholarship from the Boys and Girls Club.
So, we developed an application that, of course, needed to be completed, transcripts in. We take into account if you've been aboard, if you've been a part of the Boys and Girls Club, if you've helped volunteer, if you're a participant at all. We have, of course, a short essay, and we have a rubric. We use a rubric. Everything's fair. We split up the schools amongst each of the committee members, so things are done fairly. And we just like to honor the seniors that are graduating so that they can go out, get educated, and then, of course, come back to the place to be, which is our Boys and Girls Club.
Good. So, with that said, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the recipients for the 2019 Boys and Girls Club Awards. So, as I call your name, you can come forward, and they're all from different schools because of the rain, everybody's everywhere. So, today I want to introduce Genesis Trujillo from Mission High School. Karime Agrosso from Idea Mission. And we gave him their certificate and their award at their actual assembly. Angela Garza from Idea Mission. Cassandra Adrios from Collegiate Mission. Mia Lerma from Mission High School. Miguel Ayala from Mission Veterans. Christian Perez from Mission Veterans. Eddie Inojosa from Sharon High. Javier Lopez from Sharon High School. Laura Agrua from Sharon High. Jackie Howell from Mission Veterans. Emily Guerrero from Sherry Pioneer. Sarah O'Dowd from Sherry Pioneer. Irma Alvarado from Idea Mission. I don't know if there's any other recipients that came in maybe after the rain, but if they're here, I would like for them to move, to come forward. Everybody's here, okay. So, I present to you today the 2019 Boys and Girls Club of Mission scholarship recipients. Give them a big, big hand.
Y'all want to come over this way so we can get a group picture with the council? If I can follow or...
Congratulations. 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 Right here, I'll slide in right here. Right there next to the plaque, and they'll direct us how to get skinnier, and you can come up and pick up for us.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
In future, and come back to Mission.
Get educated.
Moving right along, we're going to move into regular meeting agenda item number five. Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. And the chamber will be open tomorrow. We will be leading the groundbreaking at 9 o'clock a.m., so we'd love your presence for the Maribel Development, which will be a high-end gated neighborhood. There will be 99 lots, so we expect 99 families to come and join the city of Mission. So, it's going to be tomorrow on the corner of Sherwood Road and Business 83 at 9 a.m. We will also have, the chamber will have the new member onboarding orientation at the headquarters at 10 a.m., and this is when we welcome all new members, and we kind of give them an orientation of their membership with us at the chamber. Thursday at 5:30 p.m., the chamber, in partnership with the RGV Vision, will be benefiting, will be hosting a mixer to benefit the Palm Valley Animal Shelter. And in the tourism world, we had a successful first meeting with our hotel industry at the Hampton Inn, and it was a roundtable discussion with the nine hotels that we have, and it was very good, a very good update. We received really good rapport, and we will now be hosting monthly meetings for the tourism industry, including the hotels, the first Tuesday of every month at 9 o'clock.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then I also am happy to report that the first calendar figures for the Mission Hotels came in. Occupancy is up 15.7 percent from 2008 first quarter, so that's really good news for us. So, for the 2019 rates, the average daily rate is up 2.7 percent to $61.68, and the occupancy is up 1 percent to 55.3. The go here is to be in the high 60s, so we've got a long ways to go, but we're on the right track. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by any of the council persons for the chamber?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for your report, Ms. Enriquez. Regular meeting agenda item number six, departmental reports. You have the departmental reports in your packet. Any questions? This is the appropriate time to address any of the department heads in which you have any questions.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second to approve as presented in writing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have people that have signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Paul Vasaldua who signed up for citizens' participation.
Mr. Vasaldua, I'll give you three minutes, and please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Paul Vasaldua, 205 West Iris in McAllen. I'm here on behalf of Vidalgo County EMS, and we've launched today a Stay Hydrated campaign, and we're providing the general public with how to prevent heat emergencies. Mayor and Council, this weekend, we had 40 calls from heat exhaustion or dehydration in our EMS system, so it was very timely for us to launch this campaign that we had planning, been planning for this summer. So, what we're asking is the city to take our tips, use them from our website or our Facebook page, and forward them onto your page. Your HR director has asked me to PDF the file for her so she can distribute it to the city personnel. This is something that we want to mushroom throughout the state of Texas, not just here in the Valley. We're asking our hospital partners, our other EMS partners, to share the tips with everybody so that the general public can get some good information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vasaldua. Any other under regular agenda item number seven?
No, Mayor.
No, no others? Okay. I'll move into a public hearing, 1.0, and I'm going to call for 1.1A. Ms. Savello.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning request. This is for tract number 38 of an unrecorded plot of Melba Carter subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1, and the request is to change the property to C3 General Business. Orfa de Leon is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 22, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located 500 feet east of Conway Boulevard along the south side of Melba Carter. The surrounding zones include C3 to the north and to the west. To the east, we have single-family residential, and to the south, we have light industrial. The existing land uses, however, are residential to the north, east, and west, and to the south, we have vacant land. The future land use map does reflect this area as a light industrial area, and while the future map does show it as a light industrial area, the reality is that we've seen the city focus more on residential zoning in the area. We've given, over the past few years, there's been a rise in the number of building permits that we have given in this area for residential construction. We also have had some city projects in the area. There's been some sidewalk installation, some streetlights also installed in the area, and so that there's been a change, I guess, if you will, in this area, and we're leaning more towards the residential side. We also had some residents that showed up the day of the planning and zoning meeting, and they voiced their concerns for commercial zoning. They want to keep it as much residential as possible. There was opposition. The applicant did show up in favor of it, but there was more opposition than there was, than there was comments in favor of it, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to deny the rezoning request. Staff is also recommending denial, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. If you want to address, come by the podium, identify yourself, please, and name an address, and you have three minutes to be able to identify yourself and state your cause in favor or against the rezoning, please.
My name is Normie Martinez. I live on 304 Melba Carter Street, just like one lot away from that one. I got my kids. The bus stop is like next to mine. My kids ride the bikes every day from one end to the other one, so that sidewalk that the city built is really good. But a car lot, because that's what the lady was trying to build last time, it wouldn't be the option, because like he said, most of us live close to that one. I mean, Mr. Carmona, he's a little bit like that way, and from where he's trying to build to the back, mostly is residential, and we want to keep it that way because of our kids. And there's been more houses being built, so there's more kids. And I think there's like some apartments trying to be built right there, so that means maybe more kids. So, for us to have more commercial there is kind of like against the kids playing around in there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You want to address the podium, please? Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Irene Garza. I'm residence 308 Melba Carter, which is about four lots or three lots away from that property they want to rezone. And basically, it is the safety reason that we want to keep it residential, basically because of the kids, and more we do have business, it means more traffic through that street, and it's just, I mean, there's only two exits, you know? And even like, let's just say, they do, you guys do approve the business, and it's a car lot, you know, people are going to want to test it out, and where are they going to test it? Probably down the street, you know? And it's, people don't, sometimes don't obey the speed limit, and even now, they sometimes don't obey the speed limit. And I know there's a sign there that says, "No 18-wheelers going through there," but we still see 18-wheelers sometimes go through there, and it's, I mean, there's a sign there, and we don't have a lot of... This is the appropriate time to address any of the department heads in which you have any questions.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve as presented in writing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have people that have signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Paul Vasaldua, who signed up for citizens' participation.
Mr. Vasaldua, I'll give you three minutes and please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Paul Vasaldua, two oh five West Iris in McAllen. I'm here on behalf of Igualdo County EMS. And we've launched today a stay hydrated campaign. And we're providing the general public with how to prevent heat emergencies. Mayor and Council, this weekend, we had forty calls from heat exhaustion or dehydration in our EMS system. So it was very timely for us to launch this campaign that we had planning, been planning for this summer. So what we're asking is the city to take our tips, use them from our website or our Facebook page, and forward them onto your page. Your H.R. Director has asked me to PDF the file for her so she can distribute it to the city personnel. This is something that we want to mushroom throughout the state of Texas, not just here in the valley. We're asking our hospital partners, our other EMS partners, to share the tips with everybody so that the general public can get some good information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vasaldua. Any other under regular agenda item number seven?
No, Mayor.
No, no others? Okay. I'll move into a public hearing, one point zero, and I'm going to call for one point one A. Ms. Acevedo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item one point one A is a public hearing for a rezoning request. This is for tract number thirty-eight of an unrecorded plot of Melba Carter subdivision. The property is currently zoned R one, and the request is to change the property to C three general business. Orfa de Leon is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located five hundred feet east of Conway Boulevard along the south side of Melba Carter. The surrounding zones include C three to the north and to the west. To the east, we have single-family residential. And to the south, we have light industrial. The existing land uses, however, are residential to the north, east, and west. And to the south, we have vacant land. The future land use map does reflect this area as a light industrial area. And while the future map does show it as a light industrial area, the reality is that we've seen the city focus more on residential zoning in the area. We've given, over the past few years, there's been a rise in the number of building permits that we have given in this area for residential construction. We also have had some city projects in the area. There's been some sidewalk installation, some streetlights also installed in the area. And so there's been a change, I guess, if you will, in this area, and we're leaning more towards the residential side. We also had some residents that showed up the day of the planning and zoning meeting, and they voiced their concerns for a commercial zoning. They want to keep it as much residential as possible. There was opposition. The applicant did show up in favor of it, but there was more opposition than there was, than there was comments in favor of it. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to deny the rezoning request. Staff is also recommending denial, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item one point one A is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. If you want to address, come by the podium, identify yourself, please, and name and address. And you have three minutes to be able to identify yourself. And state your cause in favor or against the rezoning, please.
My name is Nomi Martinez. I live on three oh four Melba Carter Street, just like one lot away from that one. I got my kids. The bus stop is like next to mine. My kids ride the bikes every day from one end to the other one. So that sidewalk that the city put, built, is really good. But a car lot, because that's what the lady was trying to build last time, it wouldn't be the option, because like he said, most of us live close to that one. I mean, Mr. Carmona, he's a little bit like that way. And from where he's trying to build to the back, mostly is residential. We want to keep it that way because of our kids. And there's been more houses being built, so there's more kids. And I think there's like some apartments trying to be built right there, so that means maybe more kids. So for us to have more commercial there is kind of like against the kids playing around in there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You want to address the podium, please? Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Irene Garza. I'm residence in three oh eight Melba Carter, which is about four lots or three lots away from that property they want to rezone. And basically, it is the safety reason that we want to keep it residential, basically because of the kids. And more, we do have business, it means more traffic through that street, and it's just, I mean, there's only two exits, you know. And even, like, let's just say, you guys do approve the business, and it's a car lot, you know, people are going to want to test it out. And where are they going to test it? Probably down the street, you know. And it's, people don't, sometimes don't obey the speed limit, and even now, they sometimes don't obey the speed limit. And I know there's a sign there that says, no eighteen-wheelers going through there, but we still see eighteen-wheelers sometimes go through there. And it's, I mean, there's a sign there, and we don't have a lot of police sometimes patrolling that area. So I mean, they shouldn't be going there, through that area, and they should be ticketed for that. So I mean, basically, it's a safety reason for the kids and for the families that live there. And like the man said earlier, there has been improvements. There's new houses. My house has been built there. I've only had two years, two, three years ongoing, and it's a brand-new house. I know there's another house room that they're building and another, there's at least two houses going up right now, brand-new houses going up. So I mean, we want to just keep it residential and make improvements and people improve their residency. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for the council, if anybody wants to, from the council, wants to make a comment.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the denial by staff and city manager.
Second.
Let me clarify the motion. Your motion is to support the planning and zoning staff recommendation to deny? Am I correct? Is that your motion?
I think this issue has already been brought to us before about us going to the wishes of the community there and keeping it as a neighborhood residential.
So your motion is to...
Deny their request for them to have...
To deny their request and to concur with the planning and zoning staff recommendation. Am I correct?
Yes, Mayor.
For the record, thank you. And I second the same. Opening for further discussion. Any of the council members want to discuss anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the planning and zoning staff recommendation deny has been denied this rezoning, plus the council. In this, I open it for one point one B, conditional use permit. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item one point one B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to place a portable building for office use at twenty-three hundred West Mile Three Road. This is a three point eight six acres out of Lot twenty-two, New Caladonia subdivision. The property is owned C three, general business, and Miguel A. de Leon is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this C U P request. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Moorefield Road and West Mile Three Road. The property was annexed recently by the city, and when the city annexed, we assumed the property as is. A portion of the property was used for the auto sales. The building was built there back when the sales initially started by the, when this property was still in the county. And then the other half is used for mechanic shop. There's about six bay doors where there's a mechanic shop that's established. The property is owned C three, and the post-hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from eight-thirty to seven P.M. And a total of two employees manning the operation. Parking, when we first saw this conditional use permit, it did not have any parking. The picture on top shows you what the building and area looked like. And the one on the bottom is a current picture. They did touch up the building and painted it, and they installed gravel and installed some stalls for customers. This other park, this other shot shows you that they installed a little bit of landscaping along the front of the, of the building next to those iron gates or bars that are there in the front of the property. The board, the P and Z did approve this item. There was nobody that showed up in opposition. The planning and zoning did approve it. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation, and that they install paved parking spaces and landscaping along Three Mile Road. And our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one B is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against a conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? There being nobody approaching the podium, I'm going to close this public hearing and open it for discussion by any of the city council persons.
May I move to approve the recommendation of the planning and zoning and subject to the paved parking area?
We have a motion to, in a second, to approve ordinance forty-seven ninety-seven. Am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
That is correct, Mayor.
Ordinance forty-seven ninety-seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance forty-seven ninety-seven is approved. Mr. Acevedo? And I'm calling two point two, consent agenda item. But before, before we vote on the consent agenda item, I'd like to remind the council that you can pull any of the items on the agenda, which I'm going to enact. I'm going to pull item two point three out, and we will do two point three independently as soon as we approve the, or disapprove the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with exception of two point three.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda except for two point three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I will call for agenda item two point three, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lerma to address us, please.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. Item two point three, I come before you, to accept the donation of an ambulance and convey to C, to Caderaeta, Nuevo León, Mexico. This donation is being done by a family from Canada, the Baessa Lanchbury family, that has a mission in Caderaeta. And of course, Caderaeta's been a sister city with the mission to it many, many years. And what we'd like to do is just to facilitate, they made contact with Mayor Ocaña and Mr. Perez. And at this time, what we'd like to do to make it easier, to make the transfer into Mexico, we'd like to accept the donation and to convey it to Caderaeta, Nuevo León, Mexico. So we're asking for...
I am ready to entertain the motion.
I move to...
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to entertain the motion to accept the donation of an ambulance and to convey it to Caderaeta, our sister city in Nuevo León, Mexico.
Mayor, we do have Mayor Ernesto Quintanilla here. If you don't mind, I can bring him up so you'd like to say a few words?
Let me, let me get the vote real quick, but let me call for discussion. I'll call for discussion at this time. Any discussions at this time and bring the...
Mayor? This is Mayor Ernesto José Quintanilla from the city of Caderaeta.
Hello, Mr. Quintanilla. Muchas gracias. Muchísimas gracias, Mayor Ocañas, a todos los regidores y regioras. Gracias por este gran aportación, este apoyo que le están haciendo a nuestra ciudad hermana de Caderaeta, Jimena, Nuevo León. Estoy muy, muy agradecido y esperemos seguir dando esta coordinación y este lazo de amistad entre las dos ciudades como es Caderaeta, Jimena, Nuevo León y Mission, Texas. Muchísimas gracias de todo corazón del pueblo de Caderaeta, Jimena, Nuevo León.
Gracias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we will donate an ambulance and convey it to Caderaeta. We'll accept the donation and...
Gracias.
Mr. Lerma, you're instructed to adhere to the policies and procedures for the transfer.
And we'll take care of the paperwork tomorrow morning, Mayor. Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you. Retato, un foto. Jesse, let's get him over here so we can take a picture.
Watch your head. Watch your head.
Su esposa. Está la esposa del alcalde. Is his wife here? Si no, no se hace nada.
Su familia.
Por favor, de este lado. Una de la cámara, por favor. Muchas gracias. No más. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
¿Qué tienes? ¿Las ganas de cerveza? Una última, por favor. Bueno. Gracias.
Moving to three point O, approvals and authorizations. Three point one preliminary plat, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point one is a preliminary plat approval of Crown Point Phase Eight subdivision. This is a resubdivision of three point zero, eighty-eight acres out of Lot two twenty-one, John H. Sherry subdivision. Property is owned R one A, large lot, single-family, and the developer is Chris Voss, the engineer's Urban Infrastructure Group. And what we have here is a continuation of the Crown Point development. It's located approximately about a third of a mile north of Business Highway eighty-three along the east side of Stewart Road. Seven large lot, single families are being proposed in this phase of the residential development. And drainage will be on-site, and they will be connecting to the existing master drain that was put in place for Crown Point. Ultimately, it drains out to Stewart Road. And the other services, as far as water and sewer, most of those services were installed in prior phases to this development. So we are recommending approval. The planning and zoning also recommended approval, and as is our city manager, our public works director, our fire marshal, and our city engineer. Item three point one is now before you.
Is there any motion to...
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. I'll open it for discussion. Anybody in the city council wants to add any questions or anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point one is approved. Mr. Acevedo, three point two, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point two is a preliminary plat approval of Capricorn Estates subdivision. This is a nine point four-three acre tract of land, more or less, out of Lot F, B.L. Miller's resubdivision, lots sixteen through twenty, Mission Groves Estates. And this is in our E.T.J. And the engineer is Homero Gutierrez, and the developer is L.L.A.A.G. LLC. And what we have here, Mayor and Council, is a subdivision that is just in the outskirts of the city limits, and we have received a request from the applicant for voluntary annexation. They want to be part of the mission, and we've contacted the County of Igualdo Planning Department and advised them of the request, and they have approved us taking over the building of the subdivision under our standards. Forty-three residential lots are being proposed. Drainage will be on-site with a series of inlets, discharging to a drainage pond, and then ultimately onto the text dot system that's along the south side of four ninety-five. Water and sewer services will also be City of Mission, and they're proposing a looped water line system with the line coming in off of four ninety-five. The Planning and Zoning Commission ruled in favor of this replat, or not replat, but this plat approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the paying of the capital sewer recovery fees and park fees, the dedication of the water rights, compliance with the model subdivision rules, and that they comply with the street alignment policy. Our city manager, fire marshal, public works director, and city engineer are also recommending approval. Item three point two is now before you.
Do I hear a motion from...
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this, I open it for discussion. Ms. Garza, you have the floor.
You mentioned that there was going to be holding ponds?
There is one holding pond at the far south, or no, it's, where the arrows pointing.
Okay.
They will be responsible to maintain that drainage pond.
So that's not a lot in that, back there, it's a drainage pond?
No, over there, there's three lots. There's, as you enter, there's a drainage pond that's being proposed there on the, on the west side. It's going to be connected to the text dot system. It's going to have a bleeder line connected to the text dot system that's there on, along four ninety-five.
All righty.
Any other question, Ms. Garza?
No.
Any other question by any of the other council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point two is approved. Three point three, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point three is a request for the authorization to solicit bids for the Weedy Lot Abatement Program. This is a program that we started back in two thousand and sixteen, at which time two contractors were awarded. We're currently in our third year of services with these contractors, and we're requesting authorization to restart another three-year approval. And the first year, we spent about seventy-five thousand. Last year, it was seventy-eight thousand, and this year, we're anticipating to hit about ninety thousand. And these are for the residential lots that get put on the mowers list, and we're recommending approval of item three point three.
And keep in mind my concept of, at the end, to have that pool of vendors, you know. So I know we had two the last time, but if we, if we can, if, you know, depending on who bids on this, if we have multiple, more than two, you know, don't hesitate to rank them with the staff, with the purchasing department, rank them officially, and have them just in case, you know...
During the rainy months?
Yes, during the rainy months, you know, or, you know, other, you know, maybe later on in the future, we can do sectional, sectional, sectional of the cities, you know, so we can know that they're doing their job also and getting it done, so we can hold people accountable for. And this, I open it for a motion?
I move for approval, but I have a question.
We have a motion, and I, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this, I open it for discussion. Ms. Ochoa, you have the floor.
Hi, Ms., only two people went for this?
We had more, but only two were qualified, meaning that they met all of the, all of the requirements, insurance requirements, and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
This is to authorize the solicit bids for the...
This is for...
Not for selection yet.
Yes, sir. So hopefully, this time around, being that the program's already been there for three years, we'll have a better...
Only because the amounts were so different of the ones that are here that are in my... unless I'm... Okay, thank you, Jaime.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point three is authorized. Three point four, Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item three point four, which is authorization to execute the first one-year renewal option for palm tree trimming. Staff is seeking authorization to execute the first one-year renewal option with Rod's Lawn Care. Contract terms are for one, one-year primary, with two one-year renewal options based on zero percent price increase. Staff and city manager recommend for renewal.
The scope of work has the Gulf Coast...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve three point four. This, I open it for any discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point four is approved. Mr. Benson, three point five, Mr. Salinas. You're pitching in.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'll be presenting the following items, and we have Mr. Roberto Salinas. Authorization to award bids for roadside mowing and litter removal services for the public works department. Received to-be responses. Awarded Gulf Coast contractor who is a lawless responsive and responsible bidder. Services will be on as needed basis. Contract items are for one year with one-year renewal option. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Keep in mind also to relate to Mr. Salinas about the pool, also.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point five, Mr. Taras, he's...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point six, authorization to award...
Item 3.6, authorization to award bids for the purchase of Flex Base Commercial Caliche for Public Works Department. Received to be responses. Award to Terra Firme Materials, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, with a total cost of $11 per ton. Orders will be placed on as needed basis throughout the one-year term. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move to approve, Mayor, to the lowest responsible bidder.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.6 is approved. 3.7, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.7, approval of purchase equipment for industrial pretreatment plant from a sole-source vendor. Equipment to be purchased in a Ecojet Aerorator Complete and 140 horsepower Ecojet Aerorator model with propeller from Aerorator Solutions, a sole-source vendor. Aerorator and model will be used as the aerorator basin for the industrial pretreatment plant to replace non-functional aerorator and model installed back in 2005, and purchased from the same vendor. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a second. And this is opening for discussion. Garza, you had a question, or...
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.7 is approved. 3.8.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.8, authorization to solicit bids for the installation of striping, pavement markings, pavement crack seal application for the Public Works Department. Striping and pavement markings will be utilized on City Mission-owned parking lots and upon completion of a street overlay or seal code application. Objective of pavement crack seal services is to maintain and extend the life of pavement by sealing noticeable cracks. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Mayor, I move to approve to solicit bids for the installation of striping and pavement markings.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.8 is approved. 3.9.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.9, authorization to solicit bids for seal code asphalt payment services on as needed basis for the Public Works Department. The objective is to service, is to apply asphalt seal code on streets in need of maintenance and achieve an extent of life of pavement. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve 3.9. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.9 is approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. 3.10, Mr. Lagarza.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 3.10. Approval of a memorandum of agreements between the City of Mission and Research Applied Technology Education and Service Rates. The agreement will allow the rate, allow rates to actively participate in the City of Mission's effort to respond and comply with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Phase 2 Stormwater Rules. Rates desires to participate in the development of a regional Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Permit Application and Stormwater Management Plan for the Lower Rio Grande Valley, TPDES. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve, 3.10. Do I... This is opening for discussion. No questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Lagarza, 3.10 is approved. 3.11.
Yes, sir. I have 3.11, approval of resolution number...
1602, sir.
Okay, entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Research Applied Technology Education and Services Rates, RGV, for representative appointment of Lower Rio Grande Valley Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Regional Task Force. The MOU will allow participation in a Lower Rio Grande Valley Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Regional Task Force, formed to respond and aid compliance with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCQ, Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase 2 Stormwater Rules, and other pertinent issues as needed. Appointment of Juan de la Garza as the representative to the task force. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Lagarza, on your appointment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lagarza.
Thank you all.
3.12, Chief Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item 3.12 is approval of resolution supporting the acceptance of the 2018 Operation Storm Garden Grant Program from the Office of the Governor for FY 2019-2020. Grant number is 3172904. This resolution is required by the Office of the Governor for the FY 2018 funds. The total amount of the grant is $325,000. The grant will provide $169,000 in overtime funds, and $156,000 of grant funds will be allocated to purchase three new police tajos for Patrol Bureau. The grant will be in effect from April 1st, 2019, through February the 29th of 2020. Staff and city manager request approval for this item.
Can I move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, resolution number 1603, for the record. And this is opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, resolution 1603 is approved. Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on the three new vehicles. 3.13, Ms. Mungia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 3.13 is the authorization to award bid for basic life in AD&amp;D, voluntary life, and long-term disability. We accepted and opened seven bid responses. We had a review committee, which consisted of human resources, finance director, deputy city manager, Floris. We evaluated bids, and UNM Life Insurance Company was selected. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor?
Do we have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and discussion. Out of the seven, this was the best one?
Yes, sir.
Yes. The committee was only two?
The committee was human resources, finance director, deputy city manager, Floris, and that was it.
Three, okay. Yeah, I see. I haven't seen the comma in between. I see now. Thank you, ma'am. Open it for discussion. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I do have a question on it. How does this apply to the managers that we have?
Managers?
Yeah, like for the one that handles our health insurance and our vision. They're totally separate.
Yes, sir.
And who handles this?
This one is the new one that was awarded to his union. They actually submitted on behalf of two agents, and we asked them to make a selection, and they selected GEF Financial.
And the agents were who?
I'm sorry?
The agents were who?
It was GEF Financial and Pita Ramio.
Okay. And were all insurance companies, you know, allowed to bid?
Yes, yes.
They were allowed to bid, you know, not the way it was before. It was only selected through by the manager.
Correct.
The manager, because the manager has their own selected group.
Yes, the agent, yes. When the agent conducts a solicitation, they remain the agent. We process this through our purchasing department, so anyone...
So anybody can apply.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. It's been approved.
Thank you.
3.13.
Thank you, Ms. Mungia.
Thank you, Ms. Mungia. 3.14, Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.14 is the approval of the April 2019 financial statements. The total unadjusted beginning fund balance was $23,517,903. Total revenues for the month were $4,977,666, and total expenditures were $8,705,557, leaving an unadjusted ending fund balance of $19,790,12, of which $2,899,978 is general fund. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the financial statement. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Opening for discussion. Anybody? Any concerns about any of the financial statements? Mr. Plata doesn't read it. No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.15, Ms. Vela.
Item 3.15 is the approval of the attached budget amendment. It is a reclassification in general fund of $4,000 from other purchase services to capital outlay, which will be used to purchase information system security programs and machinery and equipment. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.15 is approved. 3.16, Ms. Vela.
Item 3.16 is an authorization to solicit proposals for qualifications and auditing services for the City of Mission. The City Charter, Section 314, requires city council to have an independent audit of the book of accounts, records, and transactions of all administrative departments, and the audit must be done at least yearly. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize, 3.16. And this is opening for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Our motion carries, you're authorized to solicit proposals.
Thank you.
3.17, Mr. Valmariz.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Bring before you item 3.17, the authorization to solicit RFQs for environmental assessment for International Vehicle Road Bridge, My Little Bridge project. Form will include topography, federal environment studies, boundary plating preliminary, and all other necessary environmental assessment tasks as specified by the city to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal requirements. The environmental assessment includes identifying the possible environmental effects, proposed measurements to mitigate adverse effects, and predict whether there will be significant adverse environmental effects even after the mitigation is implemented, and provide a quality assurance plan as well. Road Bridge Action Committee recommended approval on May 6, 2019. Staff is seeking council direction.
Mayor, are we going to take no action on this item since we didn't get an update?
I think that I would like to see, I would like to see that we do ask for the requests for qualifications. The chairman of the railroad committees here, Mr. Barnes, you want to come over and give a quick deal on the last committee where we approved the environmental, that request for proposal? We're not going to spend any money. It's just request for qualification.
Mr. Mayor. There is a legal issue that dates back to the January 21st meeting when there was an interloper that was not approved, but it's now going to be discussed. I advise we discuss it in executive session.
So you want to move into executive session?
Yeah, there are some issues that need to be addressed.
Okay. At the request of legal, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll come back to you in a minute.
Mayor, I move to reconvene.
I have a motion to reconvene. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reconvene. I will call item 3.17. And, Plata, you going to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we table item 3.17 until we have more, maybe, at work.
Mayor, I would rather we just take no action. If we table it, it has to come to our next meeting.
Obviously, even if we table it, if you don't bring it up in the second, in the city council, it dies by itself. Do I hear a second to table?
He's saying that even if we don't bring it in the next meeting...
It don't die.
It'll die.
So it dies...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table? And this is opening for further discussion. Did I explain myself, Ms. Garza? That if we table it, it's going to go table to the next city council meeting, and if we don't bring it out, then it dies by itself.
Yes.
Okay, but I would rather that we adhere to what we discussed in executive session and table it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
No.
Okay, for the record, Ms. Garza voted no. For the tabling. But the motion is stable. Valmariz, this is 318.
3.18, staff seeking council acceptance or rejection of Performance Services Inc. investment-grade audit proposal. And if accepted, authorize staff to solicit RFQs for an independent licensed professional engineering review, seeking council direction.
At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion from Mr. Plata to go into executive session. Am I correct, Mr. Plata?
On this one? On 3.18?
It's on the next one. On the next one, Mayor.
On the next one.
Oh, on the next one? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, 3.18, no action.
That's correct. No action.
Are we going to not, we're not going to take any action?
I would make a motion, Mayor, of no action, and I would request that PSI give all necessary documents to our city attorney.
We can do it under any nondisclosure that they, what they want.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to take no action and request a nondisclosure agreement with, through our city attorney. And this is opening for discussion. Anybody have any questions? Any of the city council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and item is, has no action.
Thank you.
Now, 3.19. Mr. Plata, here's where you...
Terraza.
Terraza?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 3.19. Authorization, authority city attorney to review on call professional services contract with LNG Engineering. LNG Engineering has been performing on call professional services, which includes serving as a City of Mission Technical Committee Representative at the Dalgo Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPO, since 2009. Mr. Bayvar Samani is here with LNG. If you have any further questions, staff is requesting city attorney to review on current contract.
Mayor, I would like to request that we go into executive session.
We have a motion to go into executive session, and this...
I have a legal question.
You have a legal question. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will be back, we'll...
I move to reconvene.
I have a motion to reconvene. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Terraza, I'm calling three point one nine again, please.
Yes, sir. Item three point nineteen, authority the city attorney to review on call professional services contract with LNG Engineering. LNG Engineering has been performing on call professional services, which includes serving as a city of Mission technical committee representative at the Dago Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is NPO, since two thousand nine. Staff is requesting for city attorney to review the current contract.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
And any other agreements that are...
We have a motion and a second, and I'll open it for discussion. Do you wanna amend?
If you could amend your motion to include any other agreements?
If that's the case, I will remove the second. Let me remove the second.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
It's only limited to professional services, you understand? So engineering, architect.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, to review all, on call. Okay, so, in that case, we don't need to remove that. Any other discussion? And are we okay, legal?
Yes, sir.
We're okay to go forward? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I move to four point oh, unfinished business, four point one, we, is this a public hearing? Or a public hearing was already... Well, let me, first of all, before we can discuss it, I need a motion to get the table item out of them.
To remove from ta, the item from table on five twenty...
I have a motion to remove the table item. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The table item has been brought up, and now, Mr. Azavell, please refresh us. Is this a public hearing, so I can call the public hearing, or was the public hearing already held?
Uh, no, Mayor. At the last meeting, a petition was presented to the council, so we had time to review and accept the petition, but we didn't get into the meeting because of the petition, so the public hearing has not been held.
Okay.
Okay, item four point one is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a restaurant in a property zone C-two, neighborhood commercial, and this is at twenty fifteen North Cherry Road, the property is zone C-two, neighborhood commercial, and the applicant is Jorge Answer. On May twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Cherry Road and Summer Breeze. The property is currently, um, there's a multi-unit commercial building under construction, and the applicant intends to build a sandwich shop, a restaurant, on the property. The property is zoned C-two, and section one forty-two, three E of the zoning code states that restaurants require a conditional use permit in neighborhood commercial zones. The hours of operation for the restaurant are Monday through Friday from nine AM to nine PM, and Saturdays from ten AM to seven PM. Sundays, the restaurant would be open from twelve PM to seven PM. A total of three employees would man the operation during any given shift. This shows the area that was recently rezoned to C-two, and this is where the three homes that were on there and that commercial corner lot or vacant lot, this is where the commercial plaza is at. This is a rendering showing the commercial plaza that is currently under construction. It's still not finished yet, and the sandwich shop would be right where that brown building in the middle is at. And we have seen a previous request for seat in this C-two zoned. However, the previous request that came in in January was at the, at the north end of the commercial strip where they were proposing a taqueria with a drive-through. The taqueria would require a grease trap, a bigger grease trap, one that is buried in the back of the commercial plaza. The proposed sandwich shop would only require a smaller grease trap, typically under the sink indoors. The applicant has met with the residents in trying to come up with a resolution at this particular site, and some of the things that they have agreed on is a masonry wall along the south side and the west side. They've also agreed to close the entrance that was originally proposed off of Summer Breeze. Originally, there was an entrance at the north side, and he's also agreed not to ever have a restaurant that's gonna serve alcohol. He's also limited the type of restaurants that would be occupying his commercial plaza. He doesn't want something with, that's gonna require a grease trap to be buried underground. He wants a lighter restaurant use. However, when it comes to the border, or to the fence along the north side border, he is not meeting the demands of the residents. The residents want him to install a masonry wall, like he's doing on the south side and the west side, and the applicant is saying that the, um, the wall would be detrimental to the aesthetics of his commercial plaza. So he's agreed on pretty much all the requests, with the exception of that. There was a petition that was submitted by the residents, and the city secretary has a copy that she's gonna be handing out to the council, and it is important to go over some of the items that are on the petition, as is required whenever a petition is submitted. The first item of concern was the safety of the children. Approximately thirty children use the bus and are dropped off near that intersection along Summer Breeze. The second one was a concern that the commercial plaza did not have enough parking, and at this time, the proposal that was submitted to the city does meet parking, but that was a concern that in the event that they are bringing in commercial establishments that are successful, that there would be overflow parking onto Summer Breeze. The third request was a, or concern was the failure to provide a buffering wall along the north side. The code requires that anytime you have, you are adjacent to a residential property that you install a solid buffer, and in this case, there is not a, there's a street further north, so there is some separation between his building and the property to the north. The fourth item on the petition was that a C-two, or that a restaurant is beyond the scope of a C-two zoning. The third, or the fifth concern was that the, um, the city codes were ignored by the builder, and as far as some of the utility work that was done on site, we will look into that concern as well as some of the others, and damage, the last item on the petition is damage to residential property by the intentional misdirection of rain and stormwater onto neighboring properties is a potential civil claim against both the city and the builder. There is a, an approved drainage plan, and being that he is gonna be installing a solid buffer to the west and to the south, I believe that this has been, or that this will no longer be an issue. I did have a chance to meet with the property owner that will be directly impacted, Mr. Tommy Thompson, who I believe is here today. He's the property owner just north, or just west of the commercial plaza, and in talking to Mr. Thompson, he says that he's satisfied with all of the changes that Mr. Answer has done to the commercial plaza. At the P and Z meeting, there was opposition. As you will see here tonight, there was residents that were not in favor of the sandwich shop, and they showed their opposition. However, the planning and zoning did recommend approval of the sandwich shop. Staff is also recommending approval for a one-year conditional use permit to reassess after twelve months, that they comply with parking requirements, that they meet with all the landscaping codes, all the building health and fire codes, and that they obtain a business license prior to occupancy. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item four point one is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Stand up, go first. My name is Tommy Thompson. I live on the west side, twenty-three oh eight Summer Breeze, with my wife and six children. I've been involved with the community, and they have supported me the whole time. I have been able to avoid having a taqueria and a drive-through based on the support of Paula Weeks and the rest of the community. I have considered what Mr. Answer has offered. He and I met face to face. Under the negotiations, give and take, and not take what I give, he offered. We negotiated. We continued. He's offered me what I believe to be the least intrusive manner to have a restaurant, as he represented in the planning and zoning, he is always going to seek a restaurant. He needs an anchor base. I don't know if that's true or not, but as long as he's doing it, I'm gonna take the least intrusive restaurant as possible. Our original concerns that we voiced to this city council were, we didn't want a drive-through. Well, being in the middle of the building, can't have a drive-through. Didn't want a taqueria, didn't want anything, fried chicken, fried fish, anything that was going to have an outdoor grease trap, because you can't avoid that smell. Once it's, once it overflows, it's gonna send grease smell, attract vermin, attract insects, so I didn't do that. He has agreed to keep the grease trap inside the restaurant. If he got stink, if we have stink, he's gonna have stink. So he's gotta maintain it. It's gotta be maintained by the property user, the lease, the lessee. So, no top, no drive-through, no taqueria, indoor grease traps. Those are my demands. He's acquiesced to those. Then he wasn't going to put a masonry fence along the whole west side. I'm the one north of there. That is all my property line. He's agreed. I originally wanted an eight-foot. He offered a six-foot. We negotiated and settled on a seven-foot. That's negotiations, give and take. I said, well, I don't want a restaurant that has loud music after hours. He agreed. He would never apply for a restaurant that would be open after hours or have live music, loud music. And the most important thing, no alcohol. You know, every other time I've been here, I've heard of one C-two restaurant getting approved, and then it escalates to alcoholic beverage sales within three months. He's promised, he's put in writing, he signed the agreement, not to do that. So, I have reached agreements on four of the five issues. That is, no outdoor grease trap, no loud music, no alcohol sales, and a seven-foot masonry fence. If it's not approved, and I'm not saying approve it or not, 'cause I know they have the issue of the sidewall. If it's not approved, three months from now, he can come back and apply for another, and then another, and then another, and sooner or later, he's gonna have an outdoor grease trap. Sooner or later, he's gonna have the alcoholic beverage sales application at least. I don't wanna risk it. Some of my neighbors say, well, we're willing to risk it. And they're not living twenty feet away.
Three minutes, Mayor.
You have three minutes, sir, after, so I'll go ahead and give you a final note.
If I can say it, he's offered a sidewalk that the kids don't have, so they don't walk in the street. He is willing to put these agreements in writing. I'll put them on the spot right now. Mr. Answer, is that what we agreed to? As for their sidewall, it's a win-win for me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Hello, Mayor, Councilman. I have an actual video that I'd like to share. Is that possible, or... Okay. Well, what I brought was, I had taken two videos. One was an example of the everyday traffic that we have going on Cherry Road. The entrance and exit that you see shown on this property, our driveway faces exactly across Cherry Street, Cherry Road, on the other side. Been there since the house was built in nineteen fifty-six, and our issues are mainly going to be traffic, safety. I have been involved in several car accidents over my lifetime that were on Cherry Road, right in front of our house, and I did go to the, the city earlier last week and asked them to pull together a report over a five-year period showing how many accidents have happened in this particular stretch of the road. I wasn't able to actually bring that to you, because I guess I didn't get my request in soon enough, but I know of several accidents that have happened, and I copied one of them that our security system actually shows, where somebody had taken a truck, come across five lanes of traffic, hit our property, knocked out the whole front part and took out a mailbox, and then crossed back across and hit a palm tree. And that's just one example of the extreme traffic situations that we have going on here. I understand that Mr. Ansier has built this commercial property because there is a lot of traffic flow on Cherry, and I expect that probably that whole area is gonna turn commercial, and I understand that that's a benefit to the city of Mission. But because it is surrounded by residential right now, adding something in like a restaurant, which we are against, would increase that amount of traffic. We've got Cherry Land at the end of the street, so during the school year, it backs up traffic from four ninety-five all the way past this property and our property twice a day. And even during the summer, when the school's not in session, this particular thing happens, and I had video where I just walked out in the middle of the day, and the light turns red, and the traffic is starting to back up. Having that sooner section, that turning lane is very helpful, and we're grateful that the city did that when they widened Cherry Road, but it too has a lot of issues, where people are heading nose to nose because of driving in and out of the neighborhoods on either side of us. This is a major issue for us by adding more traffic in there, and it's a safety issue, and so therefore, we ask at this particular point in time, please turn down the request for a restaurant. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit?
My name is Garrett Edwards. I live at twenty-two zero five Summer Breeze Road. If possible, can we go back to one of the image, the color one? That one, no, one more back. Thank you. The petition that you have, just a little more detail on what you have there as far as who's representing, where the red construct, construction's been done there for the plaza, those numbers, and that cul-de-sac, numbers one all the way through twenty-one, well, I guess twenty now, Mr. Thompson was number twenty-one. His signature and family are all on that petition. Some things have developed, and I guess he's, he's negotiated that officially. So, one through twenty is there, the two homes that are on the south side, numbers twenty-seven and twenty-eight are the other, and all of the residential across the street. One, other than Tommy, one hundred percent of those others are all represented on there. They knew they couldn't all be here tonight, being summer, and other reasons why they couldn't be here in person, they were able to represent that way, so I just wanted to make sure you all understood that that was a very complete petition against. I would like to let you know that any resident who lives on Summer Breeze can tell you when we decided to purchase a home on this street that we did so in large part because it's located on a cul-de-sac and typically has less traffic, and therefore, more safety and privacy. With this new development going up at our only entrance and exit to our, to our homes, we're very unhappy with the increase in current and future traffic. We are gravely concerned for the safety and the well-being of our children. In our neighborhood, we have over thirty children ranging from one to seventeen years old. Currently, over ten of those children ride the bus home from school. Next year, more children, including my youngest daughter, who's five, will be riding the bus. The bus stop is located approximately twenty feet from this new development, so at the en, at the entrance of Summer Breeze, they, the bus stops right in the middle of the street and drops the kids off directly in front of the property there. And there is no protective barrier or means to protect our children when that happens. It's a major concern of ours that our children are now at a greater risk of danger from the increase in foot traffic, vehicle traffic, and the potential exposed, dangerous exposure to the new development will bring. This fear of ours is not unfounded, as ABC Channel thirteen news in Houston recently reported five children were killed and nine injured in crashes at bus stops across the nation in a thirty-day span. That's at the end of twenty eighteen. A Stanford Children's Health article says forty percent of school bus injuries happen because of other cars, twenty-four percent of them happening when kids are getting on or off the bus. At the end of January, in Mission, a nine-year-old girl was hit by a car while trying to get on her school bus. My daughter is nine, okay? She rides the school bus. This one hit close to home for our family, and it occurred just a couple of days after we were here with you all back in the end of January. Two days later, that's when this incident happened, after you all voted in favor of making sure that something like this wouldn't get voted in. We do not want our kids to be part of these horrific statistics. All of us residents are in agreement, minus Tommy, as to our strong opposition to the conditional use permit for a restaurant. We ask that you all continue to validate our concerns again for the safety of our children and our protest of this conditional use permit by your votes and recommendation of opposition. Thank you.
Do I have an opportunity to rebut what he's talking about? Since I've been specifically drawn out, there's a rebuttal that's necessary?
Let...
It's, I'm sorry.
But it's not original.
You've already signed up and used your three minutes. I understand your concern.
Yes. This is a public hearing, you know, and in favor or against the conditional use permit?
¿Puedo hablar en español?
Sí, como no, pero necesitamos, get somebody to translate, Mr. Perez.
Okay. Buenas noches a todos. Señor Armando Cana, mayor de, de aquí de Misión. Randy Perez, manejador de la ciudad. Y a los, a todos los comisionados, Nori Garza, el señor Beto Vela, Ruben Plata, y Jessica Ochoa. Para empezar, esta plaza se construyó con la aprobación de la ciudad, de ustedes, en C-dos. No fue algo que nosotros decidimos construir sin haber obtenido la aprobación de ustedes. Mi hijo y yo, mi hijo Jorge, y yo estamos construyendo por más de dieciséis años aquí en, aquí en la ciudad de Misión, siempre con la meta de hacer Misión una de las mejores ciudades de este valle. Incluso aquí vivimos, yo y toda mi familia.
Let him translate. Déjelo que, que hablen en, en inglés.
So Ms. Answer was saying, well, first she wanted to acknowledge every one of the council members, the city manager, and the mayor, and then she was stating that she has an approval for the development by the city of Mission, that they submitted a permit, and the city of Mission approved the construction of the commercial plaza, and she stated that she's got over sixteen years of construction experience here in Mission, of building in this community, a community that she also resides in, that she's a citizen here of Mission.
Okay. Pero podemos reconocer que a la ciudad de Misión todavía le falta estar en el nivel de la ciudad de Macalian y la ciudad de Imburgo, que son vecinos de nuestra ciudad. Pero cómo, pero cómo podemos crecer como ciudad cuando nos paran a nosotros los contratistas que queremos construir casas bonitas y traer más negocios a esta ciudad, para que los residentes de Misión tengan lugares para invertir su dinero en nuestra ciudad. residentes de Mission tengan lugares para invertir su dinero en nuestra ciudad.
She feels that Mission is staying behind to other cities, our neighboring cities like McAllen and Edinburgh, because of some of the obstacles or, I guess, restrictions that are put in place when developers and contractors like her come to the city and request to be, or to build within here, in our city limits of Mission.
Para qué es la otra ciudad para comer, para trabajar, o divertirnos? Nuevos negocios también traen empleos para los residentes. Mi hijo Jorge y yo en nuestros negocios hemos mejorado la ciudad construyéndole a doctores, inversionistas, y a los residentes de aquí del valle, para que Mission crezca como ciudad a nivel de otras ciudades.
She feels that there's a lot of need for commercial businesses, and... She's also stated that she and her son have built a lot of construction within the city limits of Mission, construction that is needed both for the citizens and for growth.
Pero siempre hay obstáculos. Al principio, un obstáculo, con el drive-through de la plaza en la cual los residentes de la subdivisión al lado se quejaron, y nosotros aceptamos de no seguir con el plan del drive-through para evitar los conflictos con los residentes, porque al fin el plan era para beneficiar a todos.
Miss Anser is stating that initially the proposal was to build a restaurant with a drive-through business, but once that was denied by the city council, they changed their, I guess, outlook, and they're deciding on something that won't be as detrimental as a drive-through and a taquería.
Pero ahora resulta otro conflicto, en el cual no dejan abrir un negocio en saladas. No estamos trayendo un bar o un lugar tóxico que posiblemente le dañaría a los residentes de esta subdivisión. Queremos poner un lugar familiar donde todos puedan disfrutar de él.
Anser is stating that what they're bringing is a sandwich shop, not a restaurant that's going to be toxic, something that's out of alcohol. This is a natural restaurant, a family restaurant, that they're proposing at this location.
Aparte, quiero que ustedes consideren que la calle Cherry es una calle principal de la ciudad. En la esquina había un terreno vacante, y al lado tres casas relativamente muy viejas. Y nosotros, para mejorar la imagen de la calle Cherry, decidimos construir una bonita plaza con la aprobación de ustedes.
Your three minutes are up. Just finish the statement.
She's stating that she purchased or invested on Cherry Road, which is a major thoroughfare, a commercial strip or a commercial five-lane road. And what she has done, her and her son, is she took a vacant piece of property and three homes, and she demolished those homes, and she's building something that's going to be attractive for the residents of Mission.
Ahora les pido...
Your three minutes are up. Just finish the statement.
She's stating that she purchased or invested on Cherry Road, which is a major thoroughfare, a commercial strip or a commercial five-lane road. And what she has done, her and her son, is she took a vacant piece of property and three homes, and she demolished those homes, and she's building something that's going to be attractive for the residents of Mission.
Ahora les pido...
Your three minutes are up. Just finish the statement.
El único que les pido es que no se pongan en el lugar, ni en el lugar de nosotros, ni de los residentes del lugar de ahí de la subdivisión. Queremos el progreso de Mission. Dejamos de invertir nuestro dinero en otras ciudades para invertirlo en nuestra ciudad. Go Mission.
Gracias.
Gracias.
She's stating that don't consider this from their standpoint or from the standpoint of the residents, but consider this from a standpoint that what they're doing is going to be something better for Mission.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Luisa Lisondo, I reside at 2202 Summer Breeze Road. Basically, we wanted to show you all, and I think I showed you all back in January when we had the same, on the drive-through, how many restaurants there are from Glasscock to Taylor on 495. If you look over here, there's another commercial area that's also just been built that has 15 lots or slots that they have that's basically nowhere near any residential areas. And there's a couple of other ones as well that are all basically not in residential areas. So this is a big deal to us because mainly the safety of our kids. It's always been about the safety of the kids. We've tried to work with Mr. Anser and suggest that maybe if he were to do some kind of a barrier there just to protect from our kids, and there has not been any kind of agreement at all. So basically, the stop, where the bus stops there, we've had multiple vehicles parking up and down that street as the construction's being built. Luckily, nothing's ever happened. So the restaurants, I know that everyone's saying that the grease traps are going to be inside and everything, but, you know, the trash of a restaurant is nothing compared to the trash of just a regular shopping center store or anything else they might be able to put that would attract rodents. The type of traffic that we think a restaurant's going to bring is just going to be horrible. This also brings me to a point about the parking. If we have not enough parking spots, which he says are within city code, what's going to happen is they're going to park down our street. And I have a couple of pictures here if you all would like to see, where you can kind of pass these around if you don't mind, and see how much space we have. We don't have very much space there. One of the neighbors almost got hit by a cement truck the other day. Luckily, nothing happened, but that would have been a great example if something did. So basically, the overflow of the parking was a main concern. I was told that there was only about five to seven parking spaces per unit, and if that's the case, then just the employees themselves are going to take up about three or four of those parking spaces. The other concerns we have is the water pressure and the sewage going down there. If we get some kind of a restaurant with the dishwashing and everything else that goes on, who knows what it's going to do to our pressure, water pressure going down that road and the sewage coming out of all those units. So I think I'd like to sum it up just basically with another picture. This was about a year and a half or two years ago in another restaurant called Masca Salias. I showed you all this back in January. As you can see, that car went straight through the restaurant, and it had a parking spot and a sidewalk right in front of it, and there it just went straight in. So what we don't want happening is if we don't have some kind of a barrier there, that, you know, cars are going to go through there. But mainly, that we think that a restaurant would have a lot more traffic than any other regular store. So I close with that.
Your three minutes are up, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lisondo. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jorge Anser. I'm the owner and developer of this commercial plaza. I just want to address a couple of things. I know there's a big concern about the bus stop being there in the corner. Now, personally, I think there's more liability with the cars driving out of that subdivision, probably a car, you know, reaching for the cell phone or texting while driving, and the kids having to walk on the street because there is no sidewalk all along that Summer Breeze Road. Now, we're willing to build a sidewalk so the kids, whenever they drop, being dropped off, they can walk on the sidewalk and not on the street. Because right now, currently, they're all walking along the street because there's no sidewalk. So I see it more, you know, liability of actually neighbors driving out of the subdivision, you know, than actually cars having to jump over the curve into a ditch, which is going to be a retention pond all along Summer Breeze for water retention, and then over the sidewalk and into the street and running into the children. I see it more difficult for that to happen than actually a car driving out of the subdivision hitting a kid. I see that now. That's, I think, one of the main concerns. I don't see any other concerns so far. Of all the restaurants that are out there, I think the sandwich shop, it's the less intrusive one. And now, we don't think that we are generating more traffic than there's already there on Cherry Road. So having a small restaurant, I don't see already, I see 20,000 over cars driving through Cherry Road daily, so I don't see why would we bring more cars than that, you know? So, I mean, I know that's the only concern so far. I just wanted to address that.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Dennis Sood, 2206 Summer Breeze Road. We'd like to coexist with this business, but he doesn't really want to coexist. If he did, he'd put a wall between us. The wall that we had before, we had a wall, we had a fence. That development before had a fence there, and it had trees there, big trees, that he cut down. He doesn't want to talk about those trees because he shouldn't have fined probably $200,000 for cutting all those trees. He didn't pay anything, because he just went down and cut them all down. It's okay. But anyway, bottom line is, if he'd built a wall to where we could coexist, then every resident in that whole neighborhood would not have signed a petition asking for him not to build a restaurant there. If he would work with us, he has not worked with us at all, not at all, not once, not once. But the bottom line is, if he had put the wall up there to separate us from his business, he could have his restaurant, by as I'm concerned. But remember, guys, when you vote, every resident in that whole area said no to that restaurant. So he's one guy that has a business that makes maybe a few dollars for the city, maybe a few dollars. At the end of the day, the restaurants will still be, he's just going to put money in one pocket to the other pocket, and it's going to go to the city. At the end of the day, the city's not going to give it that much more revenue to put a restaurant there. But you're going to make 25 residents, 50 people, very unhappy with a restaurant's funding.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Good evening. My name is Abby Reyna. I'm a resident here in Mission. I also work here in Mission. Part of my job is working in real estate as well, and I came in because I know of the people, I know of the case. My brother lives in the subdivision. I work with Mr. Anser as well, as far as his real estate needs, but I wanted to come and hear what was the whole commotion of this. And I was also part of the Mission Chamber of Commerce. Part of that role there is to entice businesses, to bring in, for people to invest their money and make Mission a better place. Like Ms. Anser earlier said, we want to have places where we can dine, where we can work, play, and live here, and make our city the best city that it can be. Now, after hearing everyone talk, I highly disagree with the gentleman that just said that Mr. Anser is not meeting halfway. He's doing more than what I think meeting everyone's demands. Now, my nephews live in that subdivision, and I understand. I feel great that he's willing to put a sidewalk, maybe a shrubbery dividing, to make the kids safe. But we all hate change. We hate change. But sometimes we need change to be better. And, you know, he's a good guy. I know him personally. My brother, again, lives in that subdivision. He doesn't know that I was going to come up and speak, but after hearing this, as a resident of Mission, I need to speak my voice, representing neither party, and saying that the truth is, if he is willing and has done everything so far to make this plaza work for him and make Mission better, we need to give him some leeway. And I hope that when you guys discuss or think about your vote, that you understand that Mission right now is priority and its goal. And that's why our slogan is "Go Mission," because we need to go further places, and sometimes it's going to be inconvenient, but when we have two parties that are willing to work and one that is doing more than the other, I think that it's time to say, "Hey, you know what? We need to put this to rest. Let's consider safety, and let's consider everything that he has done to make Mission a better place." That's why I live in Mission, that's why I work in Mission, and that's why I want to stay here in Mission.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Hi there. I'm Grant Sigler at 2018 North Cherry Road. And the reason I'm up here is, if we'll hearken back to what Ms. Anser had brought up, there were homes there. That lot was doing business. And, you know, all of a sudden now, after they went and raked those homes down, now it's a commercial property. So now we're here discussing that. And it's a simple request. They want a restaurant, and you want us to respond as a community as to what we feel about this. Well, we feel like we don't want it. I don't know what else could be said about this. We've said it time and time again. We've come before this council, we've come before planning and zoning, in large numbers, not just a few people showing up. And we said, "No." I mean, I don't understand what else we can do as a community to communicate that to you guys. So all I want to reiterate that is, we don't want it. We don't want it. We don't want to negotiate. We don't want the restaurant. It's not going to benefit us in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Hello, everybody. I guess you all already know me. I live in your offices all the time, so... My name is Paula Weeks. I live in 2203 Summer Breeze Road. And I have been the person to go between Jorge and the residents. And believe me, I have tried so hard to get everybody to work together, because I want everybody to, like you said, coexist. We know he needs his businesses, he wants his businesses to do well. We want that, too. One thing that I noticed, Randy, is that he has, it's right, we did not have a sidewalk, but we had a big fence, you know, a six-foot fence dividing the property from his plaza. He tore that down. He tore down, and we had big trees. Well, you've heard all that already. So anyway, I just would like to know what has he done? I mean, we haven't noticed anything. There's no sidewalk, there's no fence on the west side, there's nothing, only a bunch of cement. I mean, if you go over there and look at the plaza, it's a bunch of cement that now when it rains, we get it all into, it backs into our subdivision, all the water goes there, because before, at least, it used to absorb, the water used to be absorbed. Now it doesn't. We get it on there. I want Jorge to have his business. I mean, I want change, like the lady says. We want change. We're not, I'm not against change. I want change. I wanted to make it look, but it's not, we need to also think of 25 families are going to be affected by the decision of what you all, you know, decide tonight on the benefit of one person. We want him to have his businesses. We're not against his businesses. All we're asking is, please give us that division. That's all we're asking, so that we can have a life, so we can have our own. I think we're just afraid that also that the people, because we've seen it, we've seen it with his workers, we've seen it with everybody, and I know you, he already told you once before, he was going to stay out of our, actually, they had even gone into the neighbors' grass and broken sprinkler systems. They have gone, they have done more damage than they has done good. I haven't noticed anything that he has done for us. There has been, you know, he hasn't done anything. So what I would like to ask, if you, as a condition, if you are going to permit the restaurant, make it a condition that he builds that barrier to separate our subdivision from his plaza. He talks about aesthetics. Come on, you can fix it. It's like, I mean, believe me, if I were to take my makeup off, I would scare you to death. But you put makeup on, and I change completely. You know, the same thing with, I know, I'm sorry, but I have to...
You're beautiful.
You know, you think it's Halloween if I take my makeup off. But you can fix that fence. I can help you, Jorge. We'll fix it. We'll make it look really pretty. We'll put ivy. We'll take care of, make sure that it looks really nice, that it will not affect your plaza, because I want your plaza to also do well. Because if the plaza does well, we all benefit. We don't want an empty plaza with a bunch of graffiti and a bunch of stuff there. We will take care of his plaza, because the neighbors will be happy. You have happy neighbors, happy plaza owner. So that's all I ask. Please vote your conscience. If you were to live in the subdivision, how would you feel? Because you all, we depend on you all, you know? So hopefully you all can see our side. It's not that we don't want change, we just don't want danger for our children also, because it's right, we don't have a sidewalk, we had a big division, a big fence. a big fence there. We wanted that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Public, Maria Chopena Salinas, and, you know how I am about being an activist for the community, and they have spoken, not only, if you could take it back to that previous picture you had, please, it's not 20 houses you're affecting, you're affecting the whole neighborhood, which is 21 homes, over here another 30, 40, and you're looking at it not only as homes, but as families and taxpayers and voters. These voters are telling you, no, they're saying, no. Now, I'm an educator, you're an educator, you're an educator, and I'm a special educator. How many kids have I worked with have been injured? Not only in bus accidents, in accidents, all right? We've had a problem, we may be fighting with some saying, we said no to alcohol, no to that place, they violated our rights to quiet and peace, right now, the mask on nose, thank God, and like someone said, that will always bite them in the A double S. Nice traffic, children have to walk from school behind the cars because there was no sidewalk. When it rains, it pours, and it's a mess. The citizens have spoken, they are the voters, they are the taxpayers, they're telling you, no, no was homes there, you should have left the homes there, and, and these people that are coming in with the businesses, wonderful, because we're about business, we're about making money, you should have taken another spot, and in the future, I hope and pray, the two councils, the new council members and everybody take into consideration before you make such a large move, like they spent a lot of money too, so they're looking at their financial interests. Children first, families second. So, I'm with the residents over here, and I'm gonna say, I back the residents up, no.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
First, I wanna give glory to God and, and say, Mayor and the council, thank you for hearing my, hearing us out. I live at 2305 Summerbreeze. I'm not here to try to be against the builder and his, his beautiful establishment, but I just ask myself, the reason I'm here is really because, how much money, I mean, do we have to make this to think about saving people's lives? I mean, how much does it cost, does someone have to get hurt? I remember that, that overpass they built right in front of the Plaza Mall, when they built that overpass, and that overpassing, when the mayor's dweller went over the overpass and got killed, and I kept telling him, hey, how could they build that, how could they build, how did they prove that? But see, it was too late, and somebody had to die, in order for us to stop, say, you know, let's change this. Now, we've all changed all this traffic on, on, right there in front of the mall, because it was, it was unsafe to have that ramp there. I'm saying it's unsafe not to have that wall there. I'm saying it's unsafe for trash, it's unsafe for the children. When the wind blows, it always blows to the, to the north, and it always blows to my yard, so I'm always picking up trash. Just yesterday, I picked up about a HEB bag full of trash, and that's before the restaurant, before, before they even opened the establishment. I'm not, I'm just saying, if that wall was there, I wouldn't have to worry about that. And who knows what's gonna happen a year from now, two years from now, they may get another restaurant, a different kind of restaurant, they may come back and plead for something else. I'm trying to say, if we put the wall there now, we hope that that wall's gonna be there, so when the kid coming back and coming back and coming back and hearing our pleas, because the neighbors are gonna all be involved, we're gonna all be saying, we need help, we need help, and if something happens to someone, if someone gets killed, if someone gets kidnapped, then what are we gonna do then? We're gonna say, we should have put that wall there. Then it'll be too late. So, please keep that in consideration, we thank you for your time and listening to us, I don't wanna take up too much of your time, like I say, I'm not against anyone, I'm just thinking about safety, and that's the only reason why I'm here, and I'm thinking about trash in our neighborhood and keeping us all safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Resendo Agda, I own that lot number 20 there. Just to respond to Mr. Arce, the developers' example earlier regarding children have more chances of getting run over on the Summerbreeze Road than getting into an accident on a bus stop there. That subdivision's been in existence for over 25 years, I believe, and that doesn't happen yet. Meanwhile, there's been a recent accident involving a school bus, I mean, children coming off a school bus in the city of Mission recently. So, that was, that was a weak example there. And talking about sidewalk, building a sidewalk, talking about 20 yards of sidewalk, how's it gonna help the kids there in Newwood? Well, I have a special kid, he can barely stand up, so if, if anybody needs a sidewalk, he needs a sidewalk, especially when he gets that little wheelchair, so. And then, I personally like, like the committee's saying, we're not, I'm not opposed to business, but, or development, for that matter, but the business cannot, cannot degrade our quality of life, it has to serve the community. I mean, I don't want it to fail either, I want, I want, I don't want an abandoned building, you know, I want a thriving business, you know. He's saying that he needs another restaurant as an anchor business to encourage traffic in. There's a street mall down southwest of Sherry, where the UPS stores are, just across Walmart, that street mall doesn't have a plaza, doesn't have a restaurant, and business there is thriving. So, I don't care, I don't think having a restaurant is a guarantee that you'll have traffic in there. So, like I'm saying, we don't oppose business, but the business has to coexist with the, with the family, with us, with the community, it has to serve the community. But so far, right now, I guess the super majority of the community is against that restaurant right there, so that's, that's, that's what, that's my main point. So, like Ms. Paula was saying, vote as if you are leaving that area, so that's about it, thanks.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? I don't see anybody coming to the podium anymore, so I will close the public hearing, and I will ask the feedback from the city council. Any comments from the council?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Garza.
There was, I know that this has come to us before, and one of our concerns as well was the bus stop that was there, did you have a conversation with Sherry School District about that?
Yes, and one of the things that the people from the school district have told me is that, that likelihood of it changing to the north side is very slim, they prefer the bus stop to be at that location. Now, I also learned that when the bus stops, and I don't know if it's customary or if it's a policy, but the bus driver waits till the child walks about 50 feet into the subdivision. I haven't seen it, that's what I was told. They did claim that the, it's, I guess, one of the duties of the bus driver to wait until the child is at least 50 feet from, from the bus, but again, I haven't seen it with my own eyes, so.
So, do they get off? Do they get off the bus?
Not, not the driver, the driver, I guess, just stays in the bus while the kids walking, and if he waits.
In some areas, they do. In some areas, the driver gets off. I've seen it.
Maybe if they would have to cross the street.
Maybe.
And what is the possibility of the bus going into the subdivision?
The likelihood of that is slim, I did ask a representative from the school district if they would do that, and they would have to change their routes and policies to, to do the same for everybody.
Well, it may not be a bad idea.
I, sorry, Ms. Garza, while the presentation, I have already been in contact with two of Sherrill Land School Board members, and we're gonna be meeting first thing in the morning with the superintendent to address the safety concerns of the community there. I, too, from the very get-go, was concerned about the safety, that's probably each and every one of our concerns sitting up here, and I think that that is something that we can readily discuss with a superintendent about this new establishment taking a place, because now it changes the dynamics of, of that bus stop. So, I will let you guys know on what is being said. I think with communication, everything gets worked out. We've heard you, we understand, time and time again about this, but economic development is also really big for us, we're excited about this beautiful place coming into the city. And you all saw me get up, so I asked Randy, like, whose responsibility is it for the sidewalk? I feel sidewalks are a part of our community, they should be placed there, he's already saying that he'd do it. I kinda want to ask if not the sidewalk and put the fence, just so that all of us can be, that's all they want, is just the fence on the side.
I already have told earlier that I was willing to do a three-foot fence.
Okay.
But it's not inclusive to probably the whole looks, but I believe it's still one, you know, a six-foot masonry wall along that corridor, which I am not willing to do.
Okay, so, Mayor, I would like to motion that we approve as...
Hold on, before, before I accept your motion, I wanna make sure that, that Ms. Garza finished her, her thoughts, and open it for the other two to finish their thoughts.
Well, I, I definitely want to pursue that, that thought with Sherry, especially on, on Sherry Road and, and streets like Sherry Road. I think there needs to be, because I think, like, I'm not sure who said it, but someone said, the traffic on Sherry Road, you know, it's probably the second most trafficked, highly trafficked area in, in the valley, probably second to 10th Street. So, the traffic is there, so this, I don't believe that the sandwich shop is gonna increase the traffic in that area. I do know that there is an issue with, with the children getting dropped off at the corner, and there being no sidewalks, so definitely, I think the city should look into...
Sidewalks.
To the sidewalk area and, and have, you know, Sherry ISD consider going into the subdivision to, to drop off the children. Whether or not that, that subdivision or that, that development gets done, I, I still think that Sherry should do, should do that for the children. I like the idea of the three-foot wall.
Yes.
I don't like a six-foot wall on that north side, because it, it'll, I would think that it was, it's gonna obscure the eyesight of people coming in and out, and that would probably cause even more, more accidents.
We can also put a no parking, like the way we have in other restaurants, other areas, where they can not park on, on Summerbreeze.
That's a way to, to control the...
Yeah, to control.
No parking on the south side of Summerbreeze.
And that three-foot wall would, would also keep the trash from blowing to the neighbors' yards.
Masonry wall, yeah.
Masonry wall?
Yes.
I was thinking on doing a three-foot cedar fence, nice looking with trunks or like a barrier, and the reason is, if I build a masonry wall, I have to build it thin. Now, although the water flowing from the parking lot into the retention point is gonna create an issue with that water flowing from the parking lot into the retention point that's gonna be along that street, so I was looking more into a small wall, that it's not gonna affect, you know, visually, and still serve the purpose of it.
Mr. Vella, your take.
The, the three-foot wall would be good, maybe you can go ascending as you go back, just to kinda...
A masonry?
No, just the cedar fence, cedar fence would be fine, as long as...
Ma'am, we're at, the public hearing is over. Yeah, well, he's a, he's an applicant, and the council has questions on the applicant. Mr. Garza, Ms. Vella, you, any more questions?
That was...
Ms. Garza.
I'm, I'm good with that three-foot wall.
All right. Ms. Ochoa, I will entertain the motion.
Okay, so, my motion would be to approve what our planning and zoning board had originally approved, with the exception of the city doing the sidewalk, and Mr. Ansett doing the three-foot cedar fence with shrubbery, and I will be meeting with the superintendent tomorrow morning. Each and every one of you are welcome to come join me if you'd like.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve what the planning and zoning, with the exception that Council Lady Ochoa has designated. And this, I open it for final discussion for the council, do any, any final notes from the council? Any final notes from the council?
And there will be the, the fence also on the west side, right?
On the west side, it's gonna be a, a seven-foot masonry fence.
We're not waiving the buffers requirement.
Correct.
You know, keep in mind, we're not waiving the buffer requirement, there's no waiver on the buffer.
No, we're, we're actually...
Adding some more.
It's over and above what's...
I know, I know.
Because it, it didn't have to be masonry, but the, the developers have agreed to do that.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Give a couple of seconds so the audience can... We are moving to 5.0, our routine matters, and then 5.1, the city manager's comment. Mr. Pettis.
I was gonna say something.
No comments, oh, Mayor, just to, just to remind the public that we will be traveling next week to Denver in, in the competition of, of the All-American City Award, and so we will be traveling next week, just two advices.
As far as 5.2, Mayor's comment, I wanna make sure that I, I expand from Mr. Pettis' comment about next week, wishing luck to all the participants and, and good luck for the city of Mission, and those that have been doing the hash, what is it, what do you call it, hash, you know, for me, it was an abacus when I, when I had the computer, but now, now you hashtag, to continue hashtagging, so the hashtags will be reviewed by, by the judges, you know, anything that's happening in Mission that is positive, that is positive, you know, hashtag the, all, hashtag All-American City, hashtag AAC 2019, or hashtag Mission Proud, you know, please promote that, and I'm asking the audience, I'm asking the audience to, to, to do that, that every citizen of Mission show their aspect of how, what Mission is, so we can be able to bring back the All-American City label. Right now, all we can do is, is, is say that we're an All-American finalist, but we wanna come back with an All-American City label, so. Without further, I, I do also wanna, in public, recognize the Sherrill Land Baseball Team, I know they didn't show up to the recognition here, but I just do wanna let the public know that, that we do equally recognize them as, as the pioneers also, you know. Unfortunately, the URL system is created for the two, two school districts, I mean, the same school district had to meet each, each other and not at the finals, I'm hoping that they will bring it this time, that they'll figure out a way to, so they could meet at the finals, and that would be a, a great thing, to get to the, the Sweet 16, and then have to face your own, your own same school district, that, and that, the URL, I'm asking the URL if they, you know, to reconsider that, so that it's okay to meet together, but at the final, at the final aspect of the, of the, of the tournament, as far as that is concerned. So, having said that, I'll move to 5.3, city council comments, and Mr. Vella, you, we'll start with you, and...
Just good luck next week in Denver, that's it.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I just wanna formally welcome Mr. Vella aboard, I look forward to working with you, and I think we're gonna be a, a great team.
Mr. Pluppa?
Yes, welcome back, we've been here four hours, and it's been fun.
Yes, welcome back to, we've been here four hours, and it's been fun.
Ms. Ochoa?
Just really quickly, today I enrolled my son in college, and so I was there in admissions, and I looked up and I saw something great, and I was thinking, what should I say today? And I think that this is so awesome. So, service, service is the lifeblood of any organization. Everything flows from it and is nourished by it. Customer service is not a department, it's an attitude. And so, I just wanna thank each and every one of our directors that are here. I know that it's pretty late, like Mr. Plata said, we're staying here, and I just, your hard work does not go unnoticed, so thank you very much for that.
I wanna take the privilege also, as a mayor, to be able to recall an agenda item, five-point two, which is the mayor's comment, because I wanna congratulate our city attorney, Gus Martinez, and I'll render the mic to you under my agenda item for comments.
Yeah. Your comment now as an attorney.
No, it's no comment, other than the fact that we've all been here for over twelve hours. But it's a privilege, and I'm learning a lot, and I think there's, I have my trusty sidekick, Alex, here for another couple of weeks, but I think I see good things. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. That, I will entertain six-point zero adjournment.
I'm adjourned.
We have a motion, we have a second, it's undebatable, therefore, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned.